Sorry, there we go. I apologize. The motion?
All second.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Oh, you don't have a mic, do you? All righty. Ms. Hallman?
Okay.
Presentation time.
All right. Good evening. Okay, prior to the final public hearing, I'll just kind of do a quick review over the tax digest and how the digest performed this year. This is just a recap regarding the property tax process. It starts at the Tax Assessor's Office, which is a county function. They assess the property, they notify taxpayers of the value changes, they review all the appeals, and they ensure the appeal process proceeds properly. The next step is all the municipalities, whether it be the city, the county, or the school board, they establish their annual budget, and they levy a millage rate to fund the budget. The final step is, once all of that's done, it goes back to the Tax Commissioner's Office, which is a county function, and the Tax Commissioner bill collects and distributes the tax proceeds once people begin paying their tax bills. What's included in the digest, you can see that it's included real property, personal property, motor vehicles, mobile homes, timber and heavy-duty equipment. All of those categories equal your gross digest. You subtract your exemptions to come up with your net digest. For 2024, Villarica's gross digest is 1.3 billion, with 52.45% being residential, 25.99 industrial, 19.84 being commercial, and the other small, yellow section is made up of different categories that total 1.72%. And that is your utilities, motor vehicles, agriculture, conservation, mobile homes, timber, and heavy-duty equipment. This is a comparison of Villarica's digest comparing '24 to '23, with '24 being the red and '23 being the blue. By each category, our commercial increased by 10.89%, our industrial decreased by 2.44%, our residential increased by 13.43%. Other category had a minimal change of 1.89%. So our gross digest grew 8.08%. So we went from 1.2 billion to 1.3 billion. Our exemptions decreased, and we'll talk about that in a minute, from 195 million to 95 million. So that was a 51.07% decrease. Overall, our net digest was just over 1 billion last year. This year, it's 1.2 billion, which is a 19.42% increase. As you know, Villarica is split between two different counties, Douglas and Carroll, and this is taking each of those categories of commercial, industrial, residential, and the other category, and telling you which, how much commercial and all of those categories are in Douglas versus Carroll. In commercial, it's 23% in Douglas and 77% in Carroll. Industrial is 40% Douglas, 60% in Carroll. Residential is about a 50-50 split, leaving your other category 21% in Douglas and 79% in Carroll. You can see the net digest at being 1.2 billion, with 44% being in Douglas County and 56% being in Carroll County. We talk about the growth in the digest, and as you know, there's two types of growth. There's reassessment inflationary growth, and that is exactly what it is. It's due to the reassessment of property. All of the reassessment notices that go out to all the taxpayers, this is the growth that is associated with that. So just a very basic example would be if your fair market value last year was 200,000, this year it was 210,000, or it got reassessed at 210,000, that would be a $10,000 variance or a 5% increase. The other type of growth is what we call new growth or other changes to the digest, and that is due to new or improved property. So new property would be new homes, new buildings. Improved property could be a pool, a storage building, anything like that. So you take your reassessment inflationary growth, and you add your new growth and other changes to get what your total digest growth is for the year. So let's break down this growth and how it impacted Villarica. As I stated, in 2023, the value of a mill was just over $1 million, meaning for every mill levied, we generate about $1 million in tax revenue. In 2024, the same mill is now equal to $1.2 million. And how we performed based upon the inflationary or reassessment growth versus the new growth, you can see in the blue, the category of inflationary growth. We had a 4.79% increase in the digest. That would be generating around $285,000 in revenue. On the new growth or other changes to the digest, we had 14.63% growth, and that actually generates $870,000 in revenue. Again, this is a recap of those categories by county. You can see for Villarica on the Douglas County side, our reassessment or inflationary growth was just over 7%. And in Carroll County, it was 3.43%. So total Villarica reassessment inflationary growth was 4.79%. As far as the new growth, for Douglas County, it was 30.06%. We'll talk about what that red asterisk means in just a minute. Carroll County had 5.16, so our overall new growth was 14.63%. So you can see for total for Villarica, our total digest growth, being both reassessment and new growth, was 19.42%. Now, let's go back to the 30.06% and talk about that a little bit. That is a number that is not normal in any given year to have that much growth or change in the digest. And what we found out after talking with Douglas County, both Tax Commissioner's Office and Tax Assessor's Office, was that the South Wire did not file a freeport exemption in 2024. This impacted our digest, meaning that remember in the prior slides, I show where our exemptions went from 195 million to 95 million? It's primarily due to the South Wire not filing a freeport exemption. So this impacted our tax digest and resulted in approximately a half a million dollars in revenue to the good for us, an additional revenue. However, due to the appeal process, we do not recommend, nor have we included, this revenue in our 2025 budget. The appeal process has ended, the deadline has passed. However, we still do not feel 100% certain that maybe some communication loss or something got lost in the mail. So we do not want to budget for a half a million dollars in revenue, for revenue that we're not 100% sure we're going to get.
May I ask you a quick question for clarification on that one? They're eligible for this exemption, but they didn't file it and probably missed a deadline or something, right? So it's possible that they could extend them some sort of grace, and they would still get that exemption. If they don't, then it's about a half a million dollars in additional revenue on our tax digest, or?
For tax revenue, dollars coming into the general fund.
Got it.
When we talk about reassessment inflationary growth, we also use the term rollback millage rate. And that is because state law requires us to calculate the rollback millage rate to offset any inflationary increases to the digest. So you have your inflationary reassessment growth, and you divide that by your 2024 net digest. You multiply that by your prior-year millage to get what your millage rollback would be. In our case, it would be .234 mills. So you take your prior-year millage of 5.822, you subtract your rollback of .234 to come back to a 2024 rollback millage rate of 5.588. So any millage rate that is being considered that is above the 2024 rollback millage rate by state law is considered a tax increase, even if we are proposing, and which staff is proposing and recommending, to maintain the current, to maintain the millage rate as it was last year at 5.822. Again, we talk about the recommendation of 5.822 mills, which is maintaining the same millage rate as last year. That would bring in $285,000 in additional revenue. The main reason why is, as we've discussed before, is the tax allocation or the TAD fund. As you know, we have a tax allocation district, and that, we borrowed, or we issued bonds to complete certain capital projects within that fund, or within that district. The debt repayment was based on a millage rate of 6.25. Our year-to-date tax collections, meaning the first year that we started collecting this tax, or the property tax, and it would go in the special district, was last year, and we've collected around $44,000. We have a debt service payment that's coming up January 1 of 2026 of just under $2 million. And we have a lot of things going on right now that could or is affecting, or will be affecting, our revenue collections for the tax allocation district. The developments themselves, the timing of those developments for completion, as well as the millage rate that is applied to the tax allocation district. As I mentioned, the debt repayment was based on a millage rate of 6.25, which was the millage rate at the time that the TAD was being discussed and the estimates were being worked on. So we're already less than, even if maintaining the current millage rate at 5.822, we are now still, even if we maintain that millage rate, still below what was originally projected at 6.25. So you have that factor, but you also have the factor that we've discussed about all the different developments that are going on, that maybe are not meeting the estimated deadlines or the estimated completion. And that's going to impact when those developments get on the digest and when they're going to become fully taxable. So that is the main reason why we're recommending maintaining the millage rate. Based on state law, we are required to have several advertisements in the paper. We both advertise in both The Times-Georgian and The Douglas County Sentinel. The ad to the left is the notice of property tax increase. This is an ad that is very strictly monitored and checked by both the state and the tax commissioner to make sure that it was advertised appropriately, at the right time, in the right place in the paper, and at the right size. This ad has to be 30 inches square in the paper and not in the legal section. This just tells the citizens when the public hearings are, what we're proposing as a millage rate, and what that would be based on a fair market value in the community for Villarica for a homestead property. It's $312,500 is the average homestead property. So with the proposed millage rate that we're showing here, that would be $29.25 for the year for an homestead property. For a non-homestead property with a fair market value of $337,500, that would be $31.59 for the entire year. The ad that's to the right is an additional ad that we added this year based upon our deputy city manager's experience with knowing that the state requires us to advertise for a notice of property tax increase, even though we are maintaining the, or we're proposing to maintain the current millage rate. This just explains that our millage rate is equal to last year's millage rate or what we're proposing, and that it's not being increased. The rate itself is not being increased. This is another required ad for the digest. It's your current 2024 tax digest and five-year history of the levy. And you can see it's from 2019 to 2023 is your five-year history. And then your 2024 is how each of the categories, from real and personal, motor vehicles, mobile homes, et cetera, are performed year after year. And you can see in 2024, at the very bottom, where it says net taxes percentage increase is 19.42%. That is not the amount of the tax increase. The tax increase is the 4.19%. This 19.42% is the amount of additional tax revenue that we're receiving from the prior, compared to the prior year. But this also includes the half a million dollars that we're not quite sure if we're actually going to receive or not. However, we still have to advertise it based on the numbers that were provided to us by the Tax Commissioner's Office. We don't have any flexibility of changing those numbers. Another important reminder is last year, if you remember, we had the Homestead Tax Relief Grant, which is the HTRG. It expired last year. It was a one-time property tax relief grant. We were hoping that it was going to be granted again this year, but it did not happen. So at the very bottom, you'll see this is an example of a tax bill last year of this property receiving one for each, the county, the county schools, and the city of Villarica. And they actually had a grant, or the grant covered $530.88. That grant is no longer available from the state.
If I can just, clarification on that one also. That came through federal dollars that were given to the state. The state had a lot of extra funds. Most of this still came out of COVID. It came out of COVID money. Massive amounts of money were sent to different government entities, which is why the governor then said, "Let's give this tax break." And it was just like the COVID money, other than CARES and ARPA. One came under Trump, CARE, we had, ARPA first.
CARES.
CARES first, CARES first, then ARPA. And so those funds came down, they came down as a one-time thing. And so this tax relief that the governor gave was a one-time thing.
Correct. So where do the property taxes go? You can see that, you know, when people pay their property tax, whether it be they go up to the Tax Commissioner's Office or it's escrowed out of their account, the majority of the taxes go to the Board of Education in both Carroll and Douglas County. 58% in Carroll County goes to the Board of Education, 52% in Douglas County. County government takes the next biggest piece of the pie, which is 22% in Carroll County and 33% in Douglas County. And last but not least, the smallest portion of the taxes go to Villarica. In Carroll County, it's 20%, and in Villarica, I'm sorry, in Douglas County, it's 15%. So this is the millage rate schedule that we've been on. Due to the state requirements, three public hearings are required. This is the final one. We had two on August 20th, one at 10:00 a.m. and one at 6:00 p.m. We're having this one today. And then after the public hearing would be when we would ask the county mayor and council to adopt the millage rate. That is it.
Thank you. Any, before you walk away, any questions? Otherwise, we'll revert and have, oh. Hi, Ms. McCoy. I hadn't seen, I was paying such attention to this. So focused on the finances. Okay, then, we'll come back to mayor and council for discussion on this. Want me to begin?
Did you want to do the public hearing first?
Huh?
Did you want to do the public hearing and then discussion?
Yeah, we need to do that, and then we'll, yeah, let's, and then we'll have our discussion vote so we can take what citizens have to say. So we're going to open this up to a public hearing, name an address for the record. Obviously, you can speak about something else, but this hearing is for specifically the millage rate, because that's what we're voting on tonight. And the budget will be adopted, what's our date in September? The 10th of September will be the budget adoption. So there's still some time to peruse through the budget and look at that. And there'll be a public hearing for that as well. Like after this, there'll be a public hearing for that. And then there'll be two more hearings, right? We have one, just one more for the budget. Three are required for the millage? Okay, because it's assumed that taxes could be going up. And if they could go up, you need to have three hearings. All right, Pamela White. This is really the only comment time? Oh, no comment. Okay, all right. Greg Roberts. What do you think you're coming for tonight? That's okay. Is there anyone else that didn't sign in that would like to speak to the millage rate, the tax rate?
Kristi Chastain, 239 Berkeley Drive. So just to touch on something that Jennifer went over as far as why it has to be advertised, because it's considered a tax increase. It is considered a tax increase because it is a tax increase. The rate may not be going up, but in inflationary times, when property values are going up, then that causes your taxes to go up. And so for a municipality to take advantage of that is a tax increase to the taxpayer. So that's why the state of Georgia implemented this rule. So I think we have quite a bit of money coming in, in new growth, and we need to find a way to make that work. Because any other year, when property values are not shooting through the roof, that's all you're going to have to work with.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak during public comment? I'm sorry, public hearing?
Josh, 640 Cleve Street, Little Rock, Georgia. So I guess with all the tax money that comes in and the new growth, and we've seen it, we got new apartments going up everywhere, we got new homes coming in, people are moving in, and we're getting more money, we're generating more revenue, right? You guys had a number up there a while ago of 5.822 versus 5.588, right? Why are we not going with the 5.588? That's a little bit less. I mean, I don't think we need to keep it the same as last year. We got all this building that came in. They're occupying them, then you know what, there's more money coming in. Honestly, I just feel like that we keep, if we're going to keep the 5.822, then we need to see some changes around Villarica. I mean, I'm just stating it. You know, if we're going to keep that, that is what we're going to keep for this millage rate, then we need to see changes if this tax dollars are coming in. We need to see some changes. We need to see some improvements. We're not seeing any of that. We're just paying and nothing's happening. We want to see it. I mean, come on, y'all, can't expect somebody to live here. Look at our quality of life. The tax dollars do help, and you guys should be putting it in places it belongs. Put it in infrastructure, put it in some of these places, this town, town. This the ugliest downtown I've seen in a long time. It's sad. But you know what, City of McDonnell was the same way. But look at it now, City of Carterville was the same way. Look at them now. They thrive. Acworth was the same way at one time, but they're thriving because they put their money back where it needed to go. They helped some of these businesses, they helped them out, they fixed some of these little places up, and they put back into their community. We got to do something. We can't just keep collecting tax money and just letting it go out to waste and just buying trucks or cars or whatever else it buys that we don't need just for people to look good. Y'all going to start putting this money back in the infrastructure quick. Are we in sad days? We are going to be in bad days if we do not put this money back where it needs to go in this city. Invest, invest them tax dollars. I tell you what, go up on them. I'll pay whatever rate you want me to pay. Invest them tax dollars in your employees and some education. Send them out for research, send them out for continuing ed. Put your money back into your city. Let's just quit blowing it. Let's put it back where it goes, right here in Villarica.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak during the public hearing? Going once? All right, we'll close the public hearing, revert back to the council. I don't mind beginning. I've written some notes. And I don't, I don't have a vote, but I can advocate for one thing or another. And I will be honest with you, until the last several days, I didn't know exactly where I was, at least me, on how I felt about the millage rate, because I was thinking about, you know, what do we have in the budget, what do we need? The things having to do with the tax allocation district. What is that amount of revenue? So I've got printed-out copies of everything up here, including the digest growth with the inflationary growth versus the new growth. So where I've come personally, and one example is, you know, I'll pull up, here's my tax bill. This is just mine. When I was on council, I was able to accumulate about 10 of them from various people in different sections of the city so I could compare how their taxes changed over three years. So in this particular one, the current fair market value went up 31,000. Okay, so in one year, it went up 31,000, but that doesn't include the 50,000 it went up on a different year. And 30,000, because we've seen inflation do this these last years. So I've checked with some others, but I know for me, I can see how ours changed just from last year to this year. I've also, on the, one clarification on the PowerPoint, when it shows Carroll County, I don't know, does Douglas County, does Douglas County have a floating homestead exemption? They do, they have one, okay. So does that lock them in at that base rate the way Carroll County does? All right. So their millage rate, the one thing that kind of is different from the city is their property, even though it may be assessed higher, they're still taxed on the base rate when they bought that property. So that's why you may look at the bill here and you may go, "Well, they have, you know, a higher millage rate, but my county taxes is $294 and my Villarica is 816." It's because of that floating homestead exemption that just naturally keeps the rate down because you are not a tax, I'm sorry, you're not taxed on the current assessment rate. And even that, say, say your house is assessed at 330,000, you're going to be taxed on 40% of that. That's the taxable value, not the entire amount. But nonetheless, it's going to go up if your value goes up on your house. That's different from having the homestead. So just something to understand when it comes to comparing the pie between school board, county, and city. I looked at the amount of revenue, 285,175. That is what is- I looked at the amount of revenue, 285,175, that is what is, would come in with the inflationary value. So, any of the properties in the city that went up in value assessment, that would be that amount, that if we don't do the rollback, we don't bring in that revenue. Okay, so, that's $285,000 that doesn't come in. Now, that, the TAD is something we definitely need to think about, but at the same time, I'm, that's not going to cover that TAD shortfall. But I thought, is there a way to still have that money, even if we didn't tax people for it? How would we make up for it if we didn't bring in that revenue, which took me back to 15 years of economics and covering government, and trying to figure out what works in bringing in revenue for government? One way to do it is to tax people more and bring in revenue, tax business more. Another way is to work on certain types of economic development. I'll give you an example. If we're working on economic development, and we find out we're going to get, it looks like, a Scott Evans car dealership on Industrial Boulevard with a new showroom and everything else, that's a lot of tax revenue without residents. It doesn't require the same service that a, a lot of residents do. You know, you're not calling the police all the time, the fire department, it's not going there as many as it would be going into a neighborhood with a lot of houses. So, it, it doesn't require, it may require more electricity, I don't know, yeah? But overall, it doesn't require a lot of the other services as much. So, I thought, what could we do if I were one to say, I want to promote a rollback, and I am, that's why I came down, that I thought we should rollback and go from the 5.822 to the 5.588? But I still wanted us to be able to do employee COLA, employee increase on, with the salary study, I wanted to make sure that our people are getting paid fairly and competitively to those around us. I checked with Temple today, because they were one I didn't know. I knew Carrollton did a rollback, I knew Carroll County did a rollback. What's Douglas County doing? Do you know, Robert? Do you know what they're doing? Do you know what they're doing? I haven't heard. Carroll County Schools shocked us all, and they did a complete rollback. Last year, they did a token rollback. I'm sorry, I shouldn't use that term, but they, it was like half a mil, I think, so you didn't, you were still going to pay more, but it was not going to be as much. So, maybe it knocked off $29, and you're going to pay $100 more, but not 129. They did a full rollback, that caught me by, actually by surprise. And, and then, I talked to Temple today, just to find out what the, I checked with the manager over there, or mayor, I'm sorry, and they did a complete rollback. Now, that doesn't mean we have to, we don't have to do what other governments do, we're still, you know, autonomous, and we can, we don't have to follow them. But I looked at the revenue, and I'll just wrap this up, I promise, and I thought, if we didn't have that money coming in, what's a way that we could still do that? Now, one thing we're not doing is we don't have a, there's one, there's just an employee position that we don't have right now anymore. It was our Public Informations Officer, that was about $45,000 a year. And over a three-year period, that adds up to some money, but we decided that's not something we were going to budget. We just feel like it, it wasn't something we needed, and that we couldn't justify it. So, that's not in here. That Southwire, the Southwire 500,000 revenue, that may come in. Say it does, but we already raised the taxes on people. We took more taxes for people, and then we find out Southwire comes in with 500,000. Maybe we didn't have to get that additional tax. Dark time, we always have dark time where there's employees that we just don't fill the positions. Maybe a good reason, we may be recruiting for our police department, and we have two vacant positions that we don't fill for a number of months. That happens in different departments. Maybe we lose somebody in water and sewer, we lose them in recreation, and we're months looking for them. That's what we call dark time, that's money that's not spent, that's budgeted. It ends up being a savings. Sales tax increase this year is 461,000. Sales tax increase. I do believe that's going to stay up. I think we can count on it. I don't think inflation is going anywhere, no matter who wins the national election. This inflation will not disappear overnight, no matter which candidate wins. It will, I believe we're stuck with that for a while. But here's the, here's the ideal key, I think it's economic development. We are pivoting this year to less focus on residential and more on commercial development. That means we're looking at empty buildings downtown, that means we're looking at the O'Charlies, that means we're working to get somebody into the empty Publix. That's where you build your revenue without, in a sense, taking more tax money from your current residents. And in a lot of cases, does not require as many services as your residents. And that is a focus of us, Carroll Tomorrow, both Chambers of Commerce, on both counties. There's also 100,000 in the government contingency. We have not spent that over the last several years. If we were to do a rollback, and we may not, I don't know how the vote's going to go, but if we were, we might be the first ones that need to cough up some of what's in our own budget on the governing body. If we're asking somebody else to cut, maybe we need to cut what we have. And it said that the average home went up about 29 to $31. I, is that average home, I'm not sure, what was that amount? Based on a 200,000, $10 to, there's a few of those left. Seriously, I mean, housing cost is outrageous. And it doesn't sound like much, unless you add last year, and the $100 that came out of the school system last year, and the 100 before, and the 200 from the other entities that came in. So, that has to be taken into consideration, as some people, and I'm sure there's somebody even up here, that can demonstrate how their own taxes have changed. So, that's where I am on it. I wanted to explain why I'm there, not just tell you, you know, I'm for a rollback, I wanted you to understand my thinking behind it. And truly, lastly, I think we should sell the historic Methodist Chapel, because I don't think we ever should have bought a historic church. Maybe the fellowship hall, that we can turn into recreation facilities and offices, because our employees are crammed in, we can't fit them in the city hall. We did, could really use additional location, pickleball courts, there's quality of life, things that we need to do, to make this an enjoyable place for people to live. But getting into the wedding business for a government, to me, is contrary to the purpose of government. That's what the free market does, that's what those farms do. And I, for one, I will tell you this, because you will hear it no other way, I knew that someone was looking at that building before the city bought it, but I was told not to say anything, because I wanted to keep it quiet, that they were looking at that building. And this is a prior administration. So, they were discouraged by a particular person in government from making that purchase, and then we bought it. And it requires upgrades of 258,000 in one case, and more. That covers that shortfall. And my concern is if government gets into things that aren't meant for government to do, which is putting on weddings, we need to be doing parks, recreation, having public safety, taking care of our roads and sewers and pipes and all that. I'm just throwing that one out there, because I looked at it in the budget and thought, what the heck are we doing spending money on a historic church? That's for the historic preservation, and it's for private entities, if they want to do wedding venues. That is my opinion, my government philosophy. I don't speak for everyone else.
Mayor, I just wanted to, yeah, so, you know, I think my view on it is that I'm also inclined to vote for a rollback rate this year. I'm looking at this 2024 Tax Digest and the five-year history as a levy, and it's interesting, because five years ago is when I got first elected to council, back in 2019. At that time, our net MNO digest was 634,845, 604 million, excuse me, 845,079. So, in five years, that amount has increased by almost double, precisely a 1.92% increase, so almost double. The prior, prior administration had a, we have to grow ourselves out of it philosophy when it came to our water and sewer issues, and other funding issues that we had in our city. And I think you can just look at this tax digest, where we went from 643,845,079, up to 1.21 billion 220 million 109,535. And I think we've, we've done a good job of growing ourselves out of it. That being said, that growth has also put a strain on our current residents, and, you know, with traffic, and with just all the growing pains that come with growth. And so, I feel we can do something to alleviate that, those growing pains by rolling back the millage rate this year. And it may just be $29 on a $312,000 house. But knowing that maybe folks can see somewhat of a payoff for what they're having to deal with in our community with the growth, I think is beneficial, and something that we should, should consider this evening.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Councilman McCoy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first of all, I really share, share the mayor, mayor's vision of more economic development. I really think that was missing in previous, in previous governments, and I just wanted to clear that up. The other thing, too, though, is we did, in some of the comments, that we did use the contingency, and Jennifer, when I was looking at this, I think this is the math right, my math, my math is mathing, as they say, is, it says, we used, that the contingency for FY '24 was 61,590, because, that's because, didn't we use about $30,000 to cover the extra runoff election? If I remember correctly? So, we, there are times when we do use the contingency fund, we shouldn't just slash it out of the budget.
Yes, and, I'm sorry.
Just, that, that was my comment, because I know that there, there are times we have used it.
Yes, and especially, I had mentioned during the budget workshop, that we did not budget for any kind of election expense this year, or for this upcoming year, and that if there is one, then we would need to take it from contingency.
So, do we typically budget for election years that are, because municipal are usually in odd years, and this is an even year, do we still budget for elections in an odd year, when we don't have any municipal positions up?
We haven't in the past, but I think, was it last year?
If you have a referendum, if you have a question, if something happens that any of you have to step down.
Or get hit by a train. Something like that. You just never know.
You know, that remind, Mayor, that reminds me of a story. When I worked, we always said, well, if we get hit by a bus, you get hit by a bus tomorrow, what are you going to do? And finally, my supervisor was like, can we just say you won the lottery? I'm so tired of you always getting hit by the bus all the time. And, so, anyway, so that was my comment on, on that one. And my other comment was on whatever we decide to do with the church, I will probably go along with, because consensus is important. But we are talking about trying to not put more of a burden on the constituents. And I don't look, I personally don't look at it as we're getting into the wedding business, I look at it as a venue rental, which is more revenue coming in for the city. So, that's just my personal belief, I just wanted to put that out there. But on that note, going back to what Councilman Montahan said, and that we're, and I believe the numbers that we're looking at, if we roll the millage rate back, we're looking at a $285,000 decrease. As everybody has talked about, with these, I know the assessments are probably overinflated and everything, I have no problem with any type of rollback. With that being said, though, as the mayor said with, I don't, I agree with her, I don't believe any candidate is going to get rid of this inflation, and if they do, they're lying through their teeth. But with that being said, though, we don't, I am concerned that in a couple of years, we could be falling on harder times, and it could be more difficult. And I definitely do not want to raise a millage rate when we are in a recession or something, which ironically would be when we need it the most, but that would be completely unfair to everybody out there. And that's all, that's all, I sound like Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that.
I, I've been really torn about, about where, where we should go with the millage rate, so let me just put that out there real quick. I do agree with what Ms. Chastain had said earlier, that not, by not rolling back to the 5.88, it would still be the increase, taking into account that, the cost of inflation right now. So, with that said, I would be in favor of rolling back, at the very least, to the 5.588. And as far as the church, I agree, that I would be in favor of what we need to do as far as that goes, with whether we needed to sell that, or whether we needed to keep it. But my understanding, and I just want to be clear, that I don't think that the city made any kind of bad financial decision with that purchase, because my understanding of it was that we were purchasing the church, we were spending, I don't remember the exact numbers, so excuse me, because I wasn't expecting this part to come up tonight, that we were spending X amount, doing the majority of the work in-house, and I know that our, our employees, our staff, have worked very hard to make that happen. So, my understanding, by keeping all of that work in-house, was that we were going to spend far less, making that church purchase a investment for the city. We can turn around and sell that, that church, if we decided that that's what we wanted to do, for a substantial amount more than what we purchased it for, and then what we, of course, put into the renovations for it. So, I just want to put that out there as well, since the purch, since that purchase was brought up. But yes, I would be in favor of the rollback of the millage rate to at least the 5.588.
I guess that leaves just me, doesn't it?
It does, if you have anything to say.
Anyway, this is my 15th year going through this, since that millage rates, I got one more year to go on it. And I have never faltered away from supporting the property, although they pay most of the taxes that run the city. So, I've always been in favor of giving some back to them, especially when the values, artificially raise the value on a person's house, the property value. I've always favored it, and I don't, I'm not going to let up this year. I've decided that's the fair thing to do, we need to help them, they're the ones that supply the money, most of the money to run the city.
I'll do everything I can to help us in the economic development area, to try to more than make up the amount that we're giving up, in a sense, giving up, or not requiring from the taxpayers. And I think we have some people, good entrepreneurs, developers, Villa Rica Development Authority, Downtown Development Authority, and both Chambers of Commerce are working very hard in that area. in that area. And I, I think we're going to see some improvement in our downtown, as well as some other areas. So I look forward to that. We're going to have some headaches along the way, but I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to adopt the rollback millage rate of 5.588 mils for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
That is unanimous.
Next meeting.
Should we adjourn this one, or do we just go to another one?
Do, since I haven't done the budget and millage rate one, do we, oh goodness, I'm still getting confused, I'm looking over there, and I know you switched places. I would assume we need to adjourn from the millage rate to go to the other one, or can we go directly into the workshop? Okay, all right. So a motion to adjourn for the millage rate.
Now, in my motion for the adopting the millage rate, I said the fiscal year 2025, but on the sheet, it says 2024. So I need to make sure I made the right motion.
Well, it's the 2024 millage rate.
Okay.
That we collect the revenue in 2020, in our fiscal year 2025. So you said it correctly.
I did say it correctly. Kevin, that's kind of.
No, we start collecting October 1.
Yeah, it goes into effect and we collect money right away.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn from the millage rate meeting. Second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure we have to redo that.
No, that's, that's good, no.